... Because we have realized that field fires cause serious social and economic, including environmental damage. It is precisely for this reason that we are holding these public hearings. And the reason why we are here, we are to derive your esteemed inputs to formulate and promote a law. This law will speak to our national and local circumstances. At this moment, let me introduce my colleagues to you. From my right there, I have got Honorable Kunu. She is a member of parliament, serving in this committee. And a member of the African National Congress. Then, next to me here. I've got Honorable Paulson. You know he's a member of the EFF. Serving in this committee. Next to me here. I've got Honorable Mudise. Who's a member of the committee and a member of the African National Congress. The colleague next to Honorable Mudise. It's Honorable Dave Bright. A member of this committee, member of parliament and member of the Democratic Alliance. My name is Faith Mutambi, I'm the member of this committee, the chairperson of the committee. Then, I once again want to thank you for coming in these numbers. Then, let me hand over to Honorable Paulson. We'll share with you the procedure we are going to follow in making oral and written submissions. Over to your colleague.
Dumela Modalesstulo, dit o tsakometi ya portfolio.
Greetings to the chairperson and the members of the portfolio committee.
Members of the local municipal council, district council. Traditional leaders.
And the traditional leaders. And the council of. And the community of Fesile Dabi. Thank you.
We appreciate your presence. We are here to listen. This is your parliament. And you should use this opportunity to have your voices heard. We are here to listen to your oral submissions. You can also hand over a written submission to Tay Leke. She's the first lady here on my, on that side. To start, the chairperson will ask you by a show of hands if you would like to make an oral submission. You will then be asked to form a row there, where you see the microphone. When you take the microphone. You will introduce yourself. And start by saying whether or not you support the bill. You will then proceed to elaborate on your submission. Your submission can be as an individual in your personal capacity. As an organization. A political party. A civic organization. Or as farmers. The written submission can be done on the form in the documents that was provided to you. If you don't have the form. You can get the form from Tay Leke. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Honorable Paulson. This is how we're going to do it. You see behind here, there's this road that's going there on your, this road where this, you can stand up but. Yeah, you see where so that's the road that is showing you. I'm going to request you from the second row, going the other way around. If there's anyone of you who wants to raise issues with us. To occupy those seats up to the end there. And then as, when one person finishes speaking, you continue to move down. Can I see show of hands in this block? As you raise your hand, can you start moving to those chairs? Are you coming to ask a question, buddy? You shouldn't sit there, sit in that chairs unless if you're coming to ask questions. We'll raise issues, sorry. You want to take the back and lift, there's a form that you need to sign first. We'll wait for you to complete there. You can use the chairs on your. I know, you follow the other one, we know you're coming after the other. Do I only have three people thus far who want to speak? This side, I wonder what you want, just come as well. If you want to speak, come to this room. Are you done with the paperwork? You have heard you need to introduce yourself. If you are coming from destruction, mention the structure. If you are representing yourself, you tell us the community where you come from. I can hand over to you, sir.
Gidion Kotse, kom van Vrederfort de strak af, ver die boeren. Gidion. Gidion. Ver die boeren van Vrederfort. For the farmers from Vrederfort. Grond enaars moet brandbanen maken en langzele teerpaaien ook schoensnij. Landowners must create or design. Fire breaks. And have to clean the tar roads also.
You see, I'm finally hearing you speaking, you must remember you are here to interpret.
Why must we be the ones to do it, but if there's a fire that spreads from your side to the other side, then we are in trouble? Department of roads or whatever you call it, they don't do it and they always say there's no money to maintain or build roads. And then the devastating fires that you're talking about? We use our own resources to extinguish these fires without any assistance or any help from any department from the government. And then you're talking also about the climate change. Climate change is niks van die moeilijkheid wat ons krijg die er veld branden. Climate change doesn't compare to the troubles that we get from these failed fires. The problem comes in when you get the protesters that start these fires. There's no consequence when it comes to these protesters that start these fires, they're only being broadcasted on TVs, but nothing happens to them, there are no consequences. Why are these people not being arrested if they can see the faces on TV? Thank you.
Sir, are you supporting the bill or not? He supports the bill, okay. Part of the bill. And then you don't tell us which one you don't support. Oh, I see, I hear you. Okay, you will come.
I would like to greet all the people who are in this meeting today. My name is Jacob Fussis Tave. I come from Fesile Dabi district in Frederford. Frederford. Yes. Billige I support. I support the bill. We are beginning to see the transparency that was lacking in a very long time. And the cooperation that we need as South Africans. I also would like to thank the leadership that is present here today. Oh, that is showing the rainbow nation. We have been seeking or needing this for a very long time. We like, we always like to be part of the decision-making process in South Africa as South Africans. Because those decisions that are taken end up affecting us as the citizens of South Africa. By some events that are happening. I support the bill very much. I would like to dwell much on the contents of the bill. The company that I'm representing is? Innovation Solutions Tech Team. Innovation. As he mentioned indeed. We believe that we are a part of the community in the company. We are focused on the agricultural sector. Where we often experience field fires. Even if we're coming from the townships. We must participate. So that we can get the skills, so that we can be able to deal with the fires. By way of workshops in order to deal with these failed fires. It is my main request, my leadership today. And to the community gathered here today. Previously, there were some fires. Our people were taken to extinguish such fires, but they ended up being hurt because they lacked the necessary skills. So we are here to make some requests to the leadership that is present here today. To be included in the programs for capacitation in dealing with failed fires. We also would like to make a request to the white farmers. So that they can be able to capacitate us as black people, so that when we encounter such situations, we know what to do. Because what is happening is a challenge to all of us, not necessarily to the government only. So we need to work together so that whatever situation that is coming up, we are able to deal with it together. In those words, I thank you. Thank you, the next speaker.
Thank you, Chair, thank you for the opportunity, I'm gonna change to Africans right now. My name is, my name is Yoanter Blans, I'm from Goudveld FPA. I'll talk Africans and you talk English. May I talk Africans? Agree, thank you very much. So, so it was not at the party yet last night. Okay, thank you, let's try again, one, two, three, okay. My name is Yoanter Blans.
My name is Yoanter Blans. I'm an official from. Goudveld Fire Protection Association.
I'm the fire protection officer. Okay, my brandvereniging is the grootste brandvereniging in the Free State.
My firefighting unit is the biggest one in the Free State.
And we've got, da is veertien dorpje wat in my brandvereniging val.
We have fourteen towns that falls under my firefighting unit.
Um, ja, I can it noem. We'll begin by Botaville.
Botaville, the first one.
Weselsbron.
Weselsbron, the second one.
Woldfontein.
Woldfontein.
Brandvoort.
Brandvoort.
Verkerifley.
Verkerifley.
Winburg.
Winburg.
And then, then is it Ventersberg.
And then Ventersberg.
Henemann.
Henemann.
Virginia.
Virginia.
Welkom.
Welkom.
Windalsriss.
Windalsriss.
And then Ellenriech.
And then Ellenriech.
Ik is jader 2006.
Since 2006, I was.
Is ik die incident bestierder bij meer als de 1000 firen.
I'm the incident manager at more than a thousand fires.
So ik bij hier alle fire wat, wat in die area is.
So I control all the fires in the area.
And I can say.
And I can also say that.
Dat ons ook die municipalitys, die, die brandweerswerk moet doen.
That we also do the municipalities' fire brigade, fire brigades work.
Ons gaan na fire toe wat bij, bij die op paaien gebeur op die N1 en op die R30.
We go to fires that are started on the, in the N1 and the R30.
So dat is karre vrachtmoters wat aan die brand slaan.
So we're talking about vehicles that are, that are set on fire on the roads.
And, 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 um, ons groot probleem is nie land climate nie, or climate change.
And the biggest problem that we have is not climate change.
Ons probleem is die de departement.
The problem that we have is the department.
Se officials wat nie al werk doen.
And the officials that are not doing their job.
Ik staan vandaag hier so, ik is nie genoei die Free State's official om hier te staan. Ik weet per ongeluk gewoon hier is een, is een vergadering.
I'm standing here without being invited by the officials of the department, so I'm standing here by hearsay on the streets, that's how I got to know that there's a public hearing going on here today.
Ik staan ook hier om vandaag te say dat ons as Goudveld het talle briefe gestier aan die minister, minister Kresje, as ook aan Deff bij, bij hoofkantoor.
I'm standing here and I want to say that we have written a lot of letters to the department and Deff also. But no response up until now.
Uh, when, uh, wanneer ons een brief schrijf aan minister Kresje.
And when we write a letter to the minister Kresje.
Then, uh, antwoord, zij antwoord net ons die brief onthang.
They just answer that we've received the letter.
Dan of zij zal say hier, julle praat met Mel Laseki.
Of she will say no, I will refer to you, Mel Laseki. Madam, maam Laseki.
But, we wrote, ons krijft die briefe, maar ons krijg geen antwoorden.
So we write these letters with no response.
Dat, dat, dat is die grootste probleem, ik, ik woon rambestiers vergaderings bij.
And that is the biggest problem that we have because I'm attending different meetings.
Now, we're attending disaster management.
Disaster management meetings.
Where the provincial verteenworreger, niesteenworreger is nie.
Where the provincial representative is not even present in those meetings.
So, um, voorzitter, wat ik wil say is.
Chairperson, what I want to say is.
Ons het een wonerlijke brandwet en daarom ondersteun ik hier die veranderingen wat julle wil maken.
We have a wonderful fire act and that's why I'm, I'm supporting the changes and the amendments that you want to bring about.
Die probleem is die SOEs, state-owned entities.
The problem is the SOEs.
Kom, kom nie na die partijke toe nie.
They're not coming to the table, to the party.
So, alle gronde, alles nie lit van die brandvereniging nie.
They're not members of the fire protection association.
Entities that you are referring to, yeah?
Uh, the, the state, uh, die mensen wat ons die meeste, die grootste probleem meët.
The people that we have the most problems with are the following.
Is die municipalityte wat nie lit is van die, van die FPA nie.
Is the municipalities that are not members of the FPA.
And then, and then all the other states departments wat gronde het.
And all the other state departments that have land.
Dat is, dat is paaien en dat is transnet.
There is the roads, it's transnet.
And then, ja, Escom, Escom.
And then Escom also.
Ja, ik, ik wil het vandaag baaien duidelijk stel dat julle moet kennisneem.
I want to state it very clearly today, I want you to take note of this.
Dat Escom registreer servietied oren boers grond.
Escom issues a certificate over a farmer's land.
Elke servietied, ja.
Servietied, sorry.
Elke pau wat op die grond staan is een potentiële, uh, uh, probleem voor een brand wat kan stig, wat gestig wordt omdat Escom nie oneroerd doen.
Every pole that is found, that is on the land of a farmer's, of a farm, it poses a risk and it creates an opportunity for fires.
And, and wanneer dat dan groot skade is, ik doen veldbrand onderzoek of veldfire investigations.
I do veldfires investigations and when we have this big destructions or fire damage.
Ja, da, uh, ik ga net een voorbeeld noemen, bij Bosso was een groot veldbrand.
I will just name an example, at Bosso we had a huge veldfire.
Daar het 53 plaatsen afgebrand.
Fifty-three farms were damaged in the process.
Die totale skade was 27 miljoen rand geweest.
The total damage was twenty-seven million rand.
Die, as ons na Escom toe gaan.
If we go to Escom.
Medie claim, medie ice.
With a claim.
Dan is het een lang gesloer, julle wil nie voor ons help nie, en ons moet heel tijd rechtslig gebruik.
And when we, when we submit a claim to Escom, it's a whole long process and we have to make use of legal aid to expedite the process and to fasten the process.
Jy moet verstaan dat wanneer een boer gebrand is, wanneer se jelle plaats afgebrand is.
You need to understand when a farmer experiences a fire on his farm.
Hij does not, hij het, het nie geld om rechtslig te krijn.
He doesn't have the money to get legal aid.
Hij moet voorkoop voor say dieren wat afro ontstaan en kijk en wat gebrand is.
He needs to buy fodder for his animals that is standing there on the farm.
And, and dat is een groot probleem, Escom bewoord vaniger, zij skade wat hij veroorzak het uit, uit te betalen.
And that's a big problem because Escom needs to fasten the process of claims being submitted to compensate these farmers who lost their land during the fire.
So voorzitter, as, as ik kan voorstel, as julle die wet kan deerkrijen.
So chairperson, if I can make a suggestion.
As julle die wet kan deerkrijen en goed keer.
If you can pass this law.
Then moet het die, die SOE zo gauw as moontlik lit word van die gerегистreerde brandvereniging van die area.
The SOEs must be members of the registered FPA's of that areas.
That's, that's right, ja. And then moet julle meer competent mensen aanstel.
And you have to appoint more competent people.
In julle departement. Wat ons kan antwoord as ons probleem het en wat nou situaties kan kom kijk.
People that can answer queries and they can look at our situation out, out there.
Way it on key.
Thank you, Chairperson.
Thank you so much, sir. We sincerely appreciate this constructive input by yourself. Indeed, this act is meant to make sure that all state-owned entities and state organs. Must play their part. The other issues that you have raised in relation of people not attending the disaster provincial disaster management meetings. These are the matters we are going to raise with the premier of the province. So that then they do attend because those meetings are very critical. As for the letters, we've got Shileka, you can copy those letters, Shileka is going to give you the email address. Copy all the letters that you have sent to the minister. Mehe ma ngolo ao uka kopia mechileka. Then you can follow up with the minister.
Cheleka di keni helezo na, eh, MMC would emona otlar arabelle, kete lo niakopa.
And then maybe you will assure us that they are attending the disaster management meetings as expected as well.
Mchomo otlara neti fale za lore, iba ka rolo eadi ko panotseu za disaster managementi hap.
Can then hand over to you, Se.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Neo Randuba, I'm from Kwakwatzikopis.
Libitso laka ki Neo Randuba, kitzwa Kwakwatzikopis.
Firstly, I would like to point out challenges that we are facing as a community.
Ki ba ta opami sa, di pepezo zeo re shebanen lezo na re le se chaba.
In, in our, in our communities, we're facing, we're dealing with fire workers who are not well-trained.
Tulonya ro na re shebanen le basi, di timamolo, ze sa kuetli soa ngatshwanele.
We've, we've watched houses burn while standing with fire workers doing nothing.
Ri le ra shebe la matlo, achari eme moholi di timamolo, ze sa e zin leto.
The problem seems to be, to be lying with, uh, the, they do not have, they do not do fire drills. They don't often do fire drills at work.
But ta da bo, ibo na hala, ele da ba ezo se lezo eabu itzebele ba oze ba odi timamolo.
And then, uh, another thing, by the way, I support the bill, I support the bill.
Tarelo, kete tse bili.
And then, one thing, certain things we would like to see in our communities that.
Zedi ntsa di ntozeo re lakazanghu di bo na se chabensaro na.
These fire workers you are referring to, are they private or municipal officials?
They are municipal.
Is it the district or local?
Local, local municipality.
Or the fire services?
Fire services, yes.
No, the acting mayor is here, we'll have to talk to that. We wanted to understand which ones.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, proceed Neo.
Okay. And then, another challenge we are facing is, uh, our small farmers in our, in our communities.
Emwe pepezo kika.
And even in.
Ba, ba, bo, bo rapulasika ba ba limi, basan zenba xasa kahara se chabensaro na.
They, they are struggling because of field fires in, in, in our communities.
Baba li pepezo e huluma ba pili di shaha kahara tulozaro na.
And as Nata just spoke now, and they are also being faced with challenges of not having enough food to, 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 to feed their animals in the township and government.
Pepezo e abon na kahara di townshipu mon kitro keho ya di yoka po furu, ya di pofor.
And then government is not stepping in, even local government is not stepping in to assist those small farmers.
Me muso ali ha elu onaha, ukeneli otlatu sa ba limi ba obasaxa.
And another thing I would like to put emphasis on is deforestation.
Emwe intueki ba ta ngohatela kaya na ku horre ngwa hamiru.
And deforestation must only be done for agricultural purposes only.
Horre ngwa hadifate kapo hutloso hamiru, iluke la ho ba mulimongwa.
Watimo.
Watimo feela.
Yes, and then another thing that needs to be regulated is road construction.
Emwe intho eluke la ngo laoloa kita ba kahoyami bila.
Uh, road construct, uh, construction companies, they leave out, uh, oil, oils by the road and all tires and all these things. And those things are, are the very same things that are causing fire in the field.
How it's a mi bila hunalo ro, husiwe di nto kapo matlakala ebang, iba ka rolo e patlala za melo kapo ha di leza tshwara melo di za re ikekele lo fe.
And one thing I would like to, to say to government is that, uh, farmers who, whose, whose agricultural crop, crop land has been burnt down. And more often, government has not come in to intervene or to subsidize those people.
Se uki ba ta ngo sibua ha pekore ba limi, ba liman dijalo, hai ba dijalo zeo di chile, muso ha otle.
Udiye ho ba tu sa.
The government is taking long to assist the people.
So we are asking and urging government to please prioritize that because the very same crop that are being burned down, we eat from that.
We plead with the government to quickly assist those farmers because we also live on those plants that have been burnt down.
Realable.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Nata Neo, we are parliament, not government, but we'll convey your message to the government. And then we want to thank you for your constructive inputs. Next speaker.
Thank you.
Libitso laka ki Stephen Yamande.
My name is Stephen Yamande.
I was born in Fezile Dabi.
I stay here in Fezile Dabi.
Uh, returning to Ebitzwa in Dweling, Mafalane.
In a small town called Dweling, Mafalane.
Uh, I support the bill.
I support the bill.
Uh, fela ki na le ngongo re ho ho ba ni, uh, Motheo Parlamenti ne mo romelletzi Dweling.
But I only have a few, a few concerns because the person that parliament has sent to, to Dweling did not get there.
Joale, haki ako na ba la bili ena kabutla alo.
So I could, I couldn't manage to read the, the whole bill.
Joale, ne ke ko pa feela ho re, uh, refuma ne, di emaili kapo di contact detailsi. Ho re haritketao ba ba la bili enana, reko ne ho romela di inputi, haki tsebeleka di fuma na ka di contact details, Kalaebua.
So my only request is for us to be given contact details, email address, so that after we have gone through the whole bill, then we can submit our written submissions. Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming. We sincerely appreciate it. Okay, the next speaker.
Siguisela tela.
Thank you, thank you delegation. Thank you for parliament to, to having to, to be here in, uh, in the public. This is very important. This will really inspire us. I am Motalepula, so Tesi. I am Maspalinwa Mafube.
From Mafube municipality.
Motzani ngoma nyani Maspalinwa Cornelia.
In a small town called Cornelia.
I am grateful that you've given us the opportunity to also talk about other service delivery issues. Apologizing in advance that I won't dwell much on the bill because I only received it when I entered here. I'm not pointing fingers at anyone, I'm just saying I will, I'll go through it at a later stage. We have a serious challenge in Cornelia. We don't have land for where we can keep our animals. Our common age is very small. Other problems are dumping sites. Which kill our animals. And our livelihoods as well. That's the biggest challenge that we are faced with. We, we lack water, there's no water in Cornelia. The water that we get is from Frankfurt. Most of the time, our palms are bested, so we spend many more time without water. We have a township called Mahashule. And an old location called. For three weeks. Uh, my, people staying in Mahashule will go for, for three weeks without any water. That's the section that I'm referring to. They would go for three weeks without water. And then they struggle. Those are, are issues that we have. Please government see to it. There's always a loudspeaker that is running around. That informs us that the pipe has burst and there's no water. The municipality is even called the municipality of a burst pipe. Once we receive an announcement, it's about a burst pipe. We don't have any services. There are dumping sites everywhere, even inside our clinics. Those are some of the problems. Our environment is not conducive for living. I want to suggest a solution if I'm allowed. We need reservoirs in Cornelia. Please government assist us in every way that you can. But we are thankful about other, uh, that the councillor, we have, uh, geos. Please, please look at issues of, of, uh, dumping sites and the land, we also need land. People houses burned, the field burned. The papers from the dumping sites will be flown by the wind to the field and then it causes field fires. The firefighter that will assist us is only from the Frank, from Frankfurt. When they get. When they get at our, at, at our area, the fire has already ravaged everything because it's around 60 kilometers. I'm appealing to the government that we need firefighters who are well-trained so that they can assist when there's fire in our area. Please, reservoirs and firefighters are the main issues that we need assistance on. Thank you so much.
Uh, realable, Nata Tetsvoteti.
Thank you, Nata Tetsvoteti.
Thanks for coming. The issues of the service delivery at Mafube, who convey the message to the premier and the relevant emissaries.
Di ntlatsa pani di tsebelezo, mani Mafube re tla di fitisa ho premi, umu premieri.
The issue of dumping site, it's within our competency, we are going to look at that.
Tatabaya di dumping site, kibi karabelo ba Ronald la shebanaleon.
Okay, then can we allow the next speaker?
Uh, I'd like to make a statement. Greetings to our leadership. I'd like to make a statement. And the community at large from different municipalities in the district. I'm, I'm grateful for the opportunities that is afforded to me. So that I can also say my views because I'm a community member. My name is Tedingwana Rampore. I'm from a small town of Matuan Twang, Stensres. I heard many speakers have, have said something. Even us at Matuan Twang, Stensres. We have a challenge of field fires, I therefore support the bill. Challenge is here, it's a challenge, it's a challenge. There are a few challenges that we are faced with at Matuan Twang. We don't have firefighters in, in Stensres. The white farmers are the ones who assist us because they have the proper equipment. If they, they come from afar, then it takes a long time for them to, to, to get to our area. Then the, the damage becomes so severe. Because at Stensres, there are no stable jobs. Our livelihood depends on these animals. Once the fire, once the field has been, we, we have a challenge of animal feed. Another challenge is. There are, uh, there's a land that is called Common Age. The municipality does not take responsibility of assisting those common ages. Because you don't know who manages them. Who, who they have list from. Once the fire broke, there, there has to be someone who will, who will have to go to the police to report that the fi, there's a field fire. In Stensres, we depend on Krontad, most of our resources are at Krontad. Even if we can, uh, we, we can provide our own vehicles maybe for people to can extinguish the fire, there's a problem of water in Stensres. We, we, we really need your assistance as our leadership. Because in a place like Stensres, if you don't have animals, then you're stuck. Thank you so much for your presence. Since our mayor is here as well. People who own animals from, uh, Stensres in Matuan Twang. If only the mayor can come and identify Common Age land. And then her, uh, uh, identify the Common Age land. Once that has been done. Then we know that we will have people who will be responsible when there, there's a field fire. It will be my responsibility because I will have been identified, then I will go to the police and report the fire. Then the responsibility will be delegated to other people, other than the municipality. Thank you for the opportunity.
Realable, Nata, realable.
Thank you, thank you, Nata.
The acting mayor is here, that is, they are going to respond to some of your issues. They are going to respond to some of your issues.
The acting mayor oteng otlaka bela di tabense di nse ubuile ngatonana.
Can I remind the speakers five minutes?
Ki hopo se di buwi hori mu tukamu oluki la ubuame zuse me shanu fe.
And then don't continue to repeat.
Kenela peta peta uwele taba i ukahe.
Like the previous speaker, ne, we repeat, I repeat.
I ukahe taba yeu.
Okay.
Toko, tokopa olibuwa mu tu tu nyana zbaganya na sekisifu yemu.
Thank you for the opportunity given to me.
Eh, ki salo ki ma aiwasla angaka omutoanoa Matuan Twang lena.
I'm also from Matuan Twang.
Eh, ki salo mu nyanea huri li muu ska mpona ki le mu di li religi.
I'm still very young, even though I'm so tall.
Yeah. All right, libizo laka getabo mokwai.
My name is Thabo Mokwai.
Yeah. Eh, ki to supportabili.
I would like to support the bill.
Eh, ki na li doho mu mu tu wa Stensres, Matuan Twang.
I own cattle at Stensres.
Yeah, juali kiasukola ha hole lokana kuena ya selimo banamwacha. I have forty-seven years. Yeah. Yes, yes. So, hakana na kifmano re. Le ibingol do le ma oba nu nu ntsu ho ucha.
And I turn out, you know what my colleague is saying?
Yeah.
Because you have got more than forty-seven cows, it's a opportunity to take many wives.
At the age of thirty-five years. All right. Thank you, thank you. So, le ma oba ne even lo ma oba ni late no sunzu ho ucha.
Even yesterday in the evening, there were felt fires around Stensres.
So, lisbagasi re mu ora pe la ngohzo ona mu ora khona ngore. Renari re bena lo zonana ore khono renari jare zinlo zonaka ofe. Se se nyana na ha hole.
The land where we keep our animals is very small.
Yeah, ha holeka sukulisata ba haru na li le ta mi su ente la ba etapila ba ro na ba etapila ba ro na. Renali butataka kadipofo la ba bolela ora. Renali butata bucha na le bucha na kadipofo zena ro koka nte itelete. Ba referela kronstadt amu.
We don't receive any assistance from our leaders. When we tell them our problems, they refer us to kronstadt.
Then na refitla mu kronstadt, ta haona ebite re re tholang.
Then coming to kronstadt, there's nothing better that will come out of your problem.
Eh, ba obulela ora khona nan tuka bangai yeta so.
They tell you that there's nothing that they can do. You need, you are referred somewhere else.
So, ki bo na kare bigu tla re zola mle.
So I think this bill will benefit us.
Eh, hori re zola mu le mu ta mi eto le mu le mu zohona pi. Hayata miyo sukulaka na ore sakasukulaka yo. Hori sakasukulaka na kata ma hori ki sukulaka. Hori sakasukulaka yo na ya ta mi hori sukulaka. Eh, ri ki di mshala.
For me to benefit from the bill, eh, the bill will also have to benefit from me.
Yeah. Nkaita, nka ita mshala o simpu liya nyana.
Example?
Yeah. Ki re ki ba ta othola ka eh akirela faati.
If I want land?
Eh, ma ra ki utu khona ore ki le xlokomela.
But I won't be able to take care of it.
Eh, ki re li chi li chi le jua.
I will say that it has burnt down.
Yeah. So then, ki bo na olu mu le mo re bili impeto lepe le impeto olu ya. Khola mu shomon kata thola di di nte mu le mu kama rasi.
I think when this bill is passed, we will benefit more from it.
Yeah, ki to kala tu sakaka bukutu ya nyana. Rakopa ba etapila ba ro na ba tu melo oru na ba tu.
Please our leaders approach us, come closer to us.
Eh, bu netera sukola ha hole. Banaka hodi tieta ta selimu. Waacha wetala nte na kofe.
We are struggling a lot, especially during this winter month.
Ki ndapa ki eta decisionite lorenki ni discipline.
I will end up making decisions that are not correct.
All right. Sekile wile ha hole haru hutsi Africa, Africa bo ra mo la parlamente aru na mu.
Thank you so much. Let's grow South Africa together.
Thank you.
Ra libo entate.
Thank you, Thabo.
And we know you want to save God your cows.
Re atiba obatla sokomela di pofo lo saha.
It's impressive eh to see a young farmer like you.
Thabi le kanit.
Yes, over to you, madam.
Ha ki le bua mu nyata okufuwa. Thank you for the opportunity awarded to me. Kalibito ki Monica Ranue. My name is Monica Ranue. Ketsla ama le Ramuluti Fijun Skron. I'm from Ramuluti, Fijun Skron. Eh, renaji pepe tutu ngata. We have many challenges. Ya pele. The first one. Resukula kaditsebeletso ha hole. We struggle with service delivery. Getapila ura etamela huli lora. Our leadership, our leadership is far from us. Ki ka hona ilin haru haru fu mu nyata ona beren sa dilota ona kofe. That is why when we are given this opportunity, we raise everything. Ya pele pele eh eh bruk. Haru na di timamolo kaka Ramuluti. The most serious one is that we don't have firefighters in Ramuluti. Nte wu le muu haru xlo kata mi re emelea utswa kronstadt. Everything that we need, we will have to come from kronstadt. Asa kale skulos ne sechaka Ramuluti kama. Not far away, the school was burning. Ki leka ta miho ema two to three hours. We had to wait for two to three hours. Kanako mu lo ntsu tuk. By that time, the school is busy burning. Fe la kaditsono na ona mtoile ngato kuti. Fortunately, no one was hurt. Ya bo be di. Secondly. Ma keshi na ona di tila. Our townships are dirty. Haru la getapili nyana ba re jeta hori abana di tsebe. When we complain, our leadership tell us that they don't have the funds. Ma ra hauka tla li fu mu shomon lamu etapil. Should there be a funeral of a leader? Retlo ba ona kas tratasi krapu. The streets will be taken care of. Di tla tana. Michini tlo ba ten eto kulumu kama ni tuten. There will be equipment cleaning the felt. Ma ra itlini fela porshini yeu ya morfe. But only the portion where the funeral is going to be held. Potso ya ona ki hori na. The question is. Michini eh ibasiko hasi chaba silla. Why are those machines not there when the people are crying? Empahe le ba etapila banalema tata di bati. But when the leaders have problems, suddenly the equipment is there. Butata bo bo how bua happy ba oshoya. And then when you are vocal, you are being targeted as well. Ya wu kretela. Lastly. Renali klinikika ro likeshi. We have a clinic in the township. High sebe. That is not functional. Ykuwetu building eh ykuwetu tusi juali sfe tuleha la mashu. It's closed, it's like an old elephant. Haru sukula. A white elephant, I'm sorry. Haru na polistationika ro likeshi ni ena kara Ramuluti. Otlaka zibu zibu ngata. We don't have a police station in the township and Ramuluti has many criminal activities. How fu ni la mponisa ona ba ki kibatwa ra di fu ni sa ona. When you call the police, they don't answer their phones. Haba di araba betla besalebi itse batla otlaka ro balo botso. Once they answer them, they'll promise that they will come, but they never will. Ke supportabili? I support the bill. Ka je no ki le wawani majuro eti ma ni. Today, I'm thankful because the mayor is there. Ta te ki ko pa wole ma counselor hahao. Please, entate, talk to your counselor. Lo eh ena kasi bile saha ole majuro mokatsani atu melamba tu. As well as majuro mokatsani come closer to the people. Eka re di tsebe di shari tibu ha ho adi re tu kama ra di re tu. We are only considered during election time. Come on, so kala bo. Thank you so much.
Ra libo ausi, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Do we still have people decide who wants to speak?
Anahosana le batu ba batla ngubua kamo.
Liko, me in the middle, are the people still want to speak?
Le mu haru.
Calm down here.
Haiba ona le batu ba batla ngubua atamelan litro ki na di tulo mu na.
Okay. Let's proceed.
Re tsa zola pele he.
Kala bo.
Thank you.
Eh, libizo ki Alphonse Marabe Mariti kiswa kama ne kama tu wa Matuan Twang.
Libizo laka ki Alphonse Marabe Mariti from Matuan Twang.
Eh, alu mbona ki le mu na isale ki ba ta obale plasi ka nineteen eighty-eight.
I've been longing to own a farm since nineteen?
Eighty-eight.
Eight.
Impa lakaje kunseki sukola.
But even today, I'm still struggling.
Eh, kama ni kama Matuan Twang eh di komoneji di te.
There are komonejes in Matuan Twang.
Impa batuwa na le zonana na batreinez eh mu lo.
But then the question is, those people who own komonejes have not been trained to work on fire.
Na abana le zonana michini yeu utimamolo na.
They don't even have equipment to extinguish the fire.
Eh, le le liu homu di tenka kala likeshi.
There are cows also in the township.
Mu tu emu ona le uhomu seka ba amte ti wo ya udi.
One person will be having ten or more cows.
Jualu kantade ana bui.
Like entate has already.
Hobani asa free plasi atu ka kala likeshi.
Why is it that he's not given land so that he can move out of the township?
Hotle hotle ba tla ngamura ba tla ngutu tua kadu homu seka tseka tsa zuti.
So that upcoming farmers can also own their cows in the township.
Rakopa parlamenting ha ha haru ituse eh ba tu ka 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 li tu.
Please. Please parliament assist people with everything that they need.
Lu jala na ki arata ujala.
I also like growing crops.
Ena ujala ki 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 ufa paschaba.
And then growing crops is giving people stuff food.
Di pleka za ura kama ne hu ente di ground tu eh impa ite diya mu di te mo na le mu bu. Okaka ossebe di saha jala hu ona.
The land that is there, stadiums have been built, so there's no way we can.
Jualu tla jala juam plasin ku ente stadiumo.
So there is no way you can grow your crops.
Ki ka ho tla nerbu e katala re tala etenka aru Matuan Twang.
That is why we. That is why we will always talk about food insecurity because people don't grow their own crops.
Eh, le zonana uhomu seka renali zon.
Even the cattle that we own.
Rakopa pleka ereta jala fu riski kasha ba government. Ufu e pleka ereta jala fu. How uche la kona obale le li di jota di homu zaron.
We need a land where we can keep our fodder so that when there are land fires, then we know that we have a place where we can go and get fodder from.
Ba mahua ana le pleka ba mo ba storan di jota ona ten.
White people have a place where they can store their animal feed.
Eh, ibile ba khona ulu di jala.
They can even grow their own crops.
Nte wu ne kasa rufu lo banin te wu ne itu tuli ona.
We are born like that, so that cannot be approved.
Ti mogin tataruna.
We are born as farmers.
Refan pleka khono jala di jota di homu khono uki zan te wu le mu. Khono storan tataruna khono ossebe.
Give us land, please.
Rakopa.
We, we, we.
Kala bo.
Thank you so much.
Support the bill. Are you supporting the bill, entate?
Eh, ki re supportabili eh referent was utimamolo.
I support the bill. Please give us equipment to extinguish the fire.
Ha ki le bua zbagasi ukisfuwa.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Kofela parlamente.
I'm greeting all the delegation of parliament.
Ki bo na di le monje di chencha.
I see years are going by.
Getabate mona do bana parlamente. Kukela horona.
It's good news to see parliament coming back to the people.
Libizo laka ki Moike Titalin.
My name is Moike Titalin.
Kiswa ki le mu Mukaka.
From Mukaka.
Ki du la ko di nuwe mu na.
From Dinweh.
Ki le bua zobona ndatenzala.
Eh, I'm happy to see ndatenzala.
Ya pele ki le bua ki bata hori ke supportabili.
Firstly, I support the bill.
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent.
Juali ki le le bua kofela.
I would like to thank you all.
Le batu ba ti mu na.
And all the members of the community present here.
Ta ba yena ya ona ya di timamolo.
The issue of firefighters.
Asa parela obani ba tu di lohole luntzera ufiyamo na gemata.
Yeah, eh, they are far, but if things are closer, I don't think we would have encountered such a lot of problems.
Hobani how fu na fu ni la di timamolo.
When you call the firefighters.
Uthola di ansasima ba tuwa na ba diya ufilha.
You get the answers, but people take long to arrive.
Ewu ya wu bidiki ba ta re re le maspala wa Mukaka mu nyaka di wana ndatenzala.
Eh, secondly, as the people living under Mukaka municipality.
Ufu e ba tuwa na ba na di du homu ka ro likeshi no opportunity aore ba fu e chansha o apply for komonej.
Eh, the people who are owning cattle eh inside our location, they must be given opportunity to apply for komonejes.
Le ba kakore ba tuwa na ba ule di pofo lo ka ro likeshi ni ba kala di maine holo sa jurisi kabu majue.
Eh, these people who are having livestock in the location, they are blocking surges with stones.
Lady pipe nza meti mona ba haola.
They cut off eh water pipes.
Juali taba yo ki taba yo soka haola obani ki ona refa matata ka ro ma likeshi.
And that causes problems for us in the locations.
Ena wespa to ro na renalu komoneji tepe di ka ro kronstadt amu na ksa fosi.
We do have two komonejes in the, eh, within kronstadt.
Juali taba ye wu ki bata otswa nyana na luketin nyana diya kopati kopatwa re lo.
May I deviate a bit from what we're talking about?
Karo maspala lokanda ndatenzala leti.
Eh.
Rakopa eh ma counselora.
We would like to ask the counselors.
Le getapili karu ofisika ma ni.
And the leadership in the municipal offices.
Butata ko re renadi di tsebeletso zelorin di tenka ro ro likeshi ni.
We do have projects eh at the location.
Just to bua fe la osa zwa halo wita etin.
The projects are stopped haphazardly, we don't know why.
Nklayapi le kau kala me ti ha likeshi ni ba tuwa sa zwa hobani me ti akala.
Water is being stopped and the community is not notified about that.
Ya wu be di kau reporter jurisi ibilo ona manu what for sebe le regroupile.
We report about eh sewer spillages eh and we have grouped ourselves there in working section four.
What for?
What for?
Rona self manu what for haru fu ni zema spala adiya otlaka do tibula chukusika iti bu.
When we've called the municipality regarding the sewerage, they take time to come.
Juali nte wu soka jore how sebe takaka community kapo sebe takascham. Shabatanse seti ben tengu lo wu etan wu zala.
When you lead the community, the community must know everything you are doing on their behalf.
Right, ki le wile getabe zolo bana parlamente. De kara parlamente kata mshaina horu.
I'm so glad to see parliament visiting us. I, I, I think you will do it regularly.
Ke supporta lipu ya ni ma wile nyawre. Ska la tanga horu na halera shoka.
Eh, I support the lady who said, "Don't come to us if you want to use us only."
Thank you that we be la ni.
Because when you need something, you come to us. Thank you. Eh, thank you, sir.
Parliament they kile and then those issues that you have raised, the acting mayor will respond. And then ota di recommitment as to when things are going to happen? And as addis adirahali, the chileka there you must contact chileka will follow up on that. Okay, next speaker.
Thank you. Mutweni from Mafatlaning. From Mafube municipality. We support the bill, we accept it. But we do have challenges. We have been having a complaint since two thousand and eight. We are the farmers from Mafatlaning. We have been requesting the min- the municipality to provide us with farm with camps and farms. They told us to go and identify a farm and after finding a farm, we must come and tell them that where is the farm. I went to them, I told them that there is a farm on sale at a certain place. The response I got, it was so painful, it was so hurting. They said, "So what must they do?" It's a municipality by name. Our municipality is just a stooge because we never saw any action from that municipality. When we got problems, they don't assist us. When they want to use us for elections, the speaker will run day and night. What we are requesting is a minor thing, just to to see how the municipality can assist us with camps or fields. Every time when we had a meeting with the municipality, the answer is, "We don't have land." But the issue to solve this is easy. The municipality must approach the land affairs and the land affairs will identify the land and the land will be given to the people. The other thing, the mi- the municipalities' everyday answer is that we don't have money. We don't care about that, we are also poor. I'm happy that parliamentarians are here. We are being oppressed here, but thank you. Sir. We have heard you.
No, the next speaker please.
I would like to thank the delegation. We are happy to see our government coming closer to the people. I think our pleas and our cries will be taken serious. I would like to take from the eh issue which was raised by my eh predecessor when he spoke of camps. Sorry? From Fesile Dabi? Mafube? Eh, Vilias Kalabucha.
Ndati, ki hundred percent.
And I support the bill hundred percent. Eh, I'm having a bitter taste in my mouth because eh the farmers of livestock, their livestock is suffering because of fires. We don't have enough camps. And we got lots of livestock eh in in our commonages. We are requesting the government to buy us land, please. To extend or to eh augment on the land of the municipality.
Ah, R twenty-six.
And between R twenty-six and entry. Many motor vehicles pass there. Our fence, our eh fence for our camps has been stolen. And eh sometimes the fence is also dilapidated. Big trucks, big trucks are passing by our camps and they they might cause a serious accident. My le- my main plea is about the farmers. According to the commonage eh policy, it says, the commonage policy says, "If your animals are more than thirty." There are three categories there. The third one. I'm not happy about the the third category. Because we need training about eh eh that category. Like myself. I've got eh more than fifty kettles. I made applications, I was assisted by white farmers that I must apply for getting eh more land such that eh my kettles can be accommodated because it's a large number. According to category three. No support is available. To be assisted. I've eh made five applications. Since two thousand till today. No assistance. Please, oh please. I'm supporting this bill. Medikena ka di kampunza. In our area, we do have dumping places but they are well fenced. But during eh eh windy times, the the papers and plastic are eh flying over the fence. The livestock eat the plastic and they die. My livestock is a beef master. My problem is, I'm not assisted by land in order for me to farm further. Thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Sosutu.
Welcome.
I'm Elisa Fenter, I am the secretary of Mukaka Fire Protection Association. I first of all need to apologize for my chairman, my vice chairman and my fire protection officer. Fire protection officer. They cannot attend because they are also volunteers just like me. Mukaka Fire Protection Association consists only of volunteers, there is no one that gets any pay. All of us, I'm sorry. To be a member of the eh of the Fire Protection Association, you need to pay a member fee. That is why it's so very important for the municipality to take part and actually come forward and speak. I can suggest that the municipality speak to councillor eh Johan Haldenais, better known as Spasky. Johan Haldenais.
Johan Haldenais.
Better known as Spasky. He is our chairman. He is also a ward councillor that does his work and most of the problems mentioned here, as you as parliamentarians know, should have been discussed by the ward councillors and the ward councillors should have been putting pressure on the municipality. The people vote for the ward councillor to represent them in the municipality. And the ward councillor must then put pressure on the municipality. We also hear that one of the problems we have since we changed from eh the Department of Agriculture, Forestry and Fisheries eh to DFFE is that no longer does feldfires fall under the Department of Agriculture and Rural Development. And all of the problems discussed here.
No fires, are you saying no fires? Eh under the the current or the previous?
We used to be part of DEF, where agriculture department formed part of DEF. Now we fall under DFFE and agriculture does not fit in there. Agriculture forms part of the Department of Agriculture for eh agriculture and rural development. And as you have heard, all of the problems discussed here is actually the problem of the Department of Agricultural and Rural Development. Besides hearing that the problems is agricultural and rural development, I also heard that the people would like to be empowered to fight fires, I've heard this. The Mukaka Fire Protection Association do eh assist our members. Um Minister Creasy, who is our minister in feldfires, used to be the M E C of Education in Khating. Maybe she can use the fire eh eh connections and her knowledge of education to actually form a way for us to train the people. Okay, our fire department is based in Grostat, Mukaka. Because of mismanagement by the municipality in the past, they are a struggling department. I can honestly say that the firemen we have in Grostat at the moment are people that I appreciate. And when I do attend a fire where they are, I have to really look up to them with respect. But they do not have the right equipment, the municipality do not supply them with the equipment. Um, the there is no proper budget for the fire department. And it is true that the farmers in Staines Res, Filyun Skrun, eh Ramulotsi, all the areas around there, when there is a fire, they will attend. But please note that all our members are volunteers and they do not get refunded when they go out. They do not get paid for the diesel for their vehicle. They have to maintain their own vehicles. They have to maintain their own equipment. They have to spend their own time. If anything goes wrong on their equipment or their vehicle. They are not refunded. So to be a member of Mukaka Fire Protection Association is a very expensive trip. And when they go and do the municipality's work, it is sad, in Staines Res, we had a complaint last year. Our sector leader in Staines Re- Res, Nas Fenter. Made a point of asking the municipality to clean the area so that the risk of fire is lower. But they did not. And so they, the farmers had to go out and help these people. I appreciate ndate that you mentioned that it's true. Just to mention, um this sometimes is a problem in the inner workings of the Fire Protection Association. Um fires have absolutely no regard for the municipal borders. This sounds silly but it actually has repercussions.
Eh, ukuwala ekare eh ya tsehi samara, ditlamorao zati, dibusho.
Mukaka Fire Protection Association is much wider than the borders currently by set by the municipality.
Joale, eh musebitwa Mukanka omo holo hufeta melilo anu konza di border sese diwe ilue mo.
And this is for absolute practical reasons. Because a fire depends on geog- geography and not on the will of a political party.
Eh, molo hau keita, hau na oru wa wa patie feing ora wa patie feing, oh kaila bubut.
I support the bill, but need to remind parliament that the majority of municipalities in South Africa is dysfunctional and cannot handle even water supply, as we've heard, or road maintenance, as we've heard.
Ke ma, ke no king eh bili feela. Sesi inkukisa mutlokoru Maspo Maspala babanga tamo na henyarona habasebitwa, haba kono ahadi zela, haba kono tivela melo.
Running a fire protection association needs people with a heart of dedication.
Joale he, hu bamu nekachonke ya ya olu ansamelo otlamele onne lepe loya lejwe, kono yamelanale molo.
A heart of dedication to protect the community against fire.
Le hurupelwa, habatu hori bakone hutusa monkling ya olu ansamelo.
And this is where I've heard the farmers speak. Rubbish that's lying around, the schoolchildren are, sorry.
Ki uduwele Bora Plaza bapuaka yonatabe ya horo hona lihudi zila, di koloo, adi hantle.
And here maybe our minister can help us again. The schools are doing life orientation.
Eh, kodikolu kwa ekare nchle ekato makoskolomba tubarutiwa kaya onan tabaye.
They taught a lot of silly things. I've got two children in school.
Bana barona barutiwa ntozena ta zedis namole mo.
But they are not taught about fire protection.
Haba rutuika molo, oremolo olu ansajuan.
Should fire protection not become part of life orientation?
Mara libone molo eh tabaya ya hurutava na kamolo eh tlamilebe karolo ya 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 timolo ya ya tutu ya boona.
I would also like to make mention that our local police is not interested in arresting arsonists.
Eh, joale he.
And it is a big problem.
Le batubaba ezamelu habatsuar.
Oh, please don't even report a failed fire.
Mapodisi, kaza mapanesa, ai ai reportilita be yawa ro hono uchaka.
I also hear that there's a difference between a failed fire and a fire in settlements. And for that, I would like to remind this meeting that there is also the Fire Brigade Service Act of ninety-nine of nineteen eighty-seven. And that it is two different laws, two different acts.
Uduwele, kuwuleka melo ya ya mikuku, le melo ya eh ditlaha. Joale mola okei, poza eh, ke melo nidei konza ke mola omo ani, oru buankawanau.
And that's why the Fire Act one oh one of ninety-eight provides for a felled fire act and then the Fire Brigade Service Act.
Eh, mola owa ninety-eight wa na ubuaka hori, ho tlamile honne le ba eh eh ba ba loansamolo. Oh yakamola u, batlamile honati.
There's something I would really like to tell you. I am a cheerleader for the fire people in Mukaka Fire Protection Association.
Eh, na ki 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 kera taba tuva baba loansamelo, ibile ken na kebaitele zipeli mo, mo, mo Mukaka.
Mukaka.
Oh, yonai.
Um. In, in Afrikaans we say alas, astars.
Oh, eh babotloka ta taba tuva ka Africans, barba astars.
The, there are, the people in the Mukaka Fire Protection Association are people that look after their community, that take care of each other.
Batu bamutla, ba 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 mo kachonku buankawanau, ba shoku mete batubabona, kane tebaba tusatat.
And I am often deeply touched by the way they sacrifice to keep the community safe.
Ke katse bankama ma ikutlo katsele ba ba bana lebu inel oka demo, mo tsepeto nyabo na eh.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Ke lebo eti, mu nyetla ona.
I, I know you've got much more to say.
Please carry our voice to parliament, please do.
Alen zela rona lukuwa ha loko parlamente ngoko.
Then, Ms Fender, you can submit also in writing. I think you have got much more to share as well.
Eba ona lisosungwezing okana wa tlisha eh karka utwa karetse di musezo, ke ngata.
Okay, the next speaker, please.
Siwise latela. Greetings to all the committee members in here.
Kidumeriseba itapele ba rona.
And greetings to all our leadership.
Batu ankaha ra parlamente ya rona ya naha.
From our, from our national government.
Nakali pito ki Bibi Mutlowun.
My name is Bibi Mutlowun.
Ke toa motso wa Villas.
I'm from Villas.
Eh, kenale dinto nyana kapaditlaiso, kapaditletlebo teva tandilimaluanyan.
I've got a few points to to table here.
Ya pele ke hori, realewa haparlamente ikile empa kekopa feela hori, hotose tseki todivua mo parlamente hai itzama, eskar furala feela di peta halekamura.
I've got some that I'm going to table here. But please, parliament, when you leave, please do something about our contributions here.
Redula Villas eh plan National Road number three, Moeloreng.
We are staying in Villas next to National Road number three.
Moeloreng, Harena eh, ba tu baseweza, kaza molo, kapaa eh ditimamolo, se ufiyana le ro.
We don't have firefighters nearby.
Di Frankfurt, omoeloreng otsamaya eh di kilometarazet thirty-six, hoya ti.
They are in Frankfurt, where you have to travel for thirty-six kilometers to get there.
Joale, har chelelo, okana hana hori, thirty-six kilometers eh, gas timamolo se tletze me itzile batu, se tonkana kueka ufitla kara motso waro.
So, in case there's fire, you can imagine if the the vehicle has to travel for thirty-six kilometers and there's a structure that is already burning there.
Reasinyeh, lakemolo like, last year, kichelle tu plotonyaga, hacha, di furuka feela, ampuridi homo diich.
There's destruction in our fields or areas, yes.
Last year.
Last year, the my animal fodder got bent down completely.
Okay. Joale, le mete ya hacha, no, ke holo ki, le mete ya hacha.
And houses get bent down because?
Ditimamolo dihori.
Firefighters are very far.
Hona linthwe ekiluan kipota yonahoro poseki yenzinku ahakara motsoa Villas.
I always ask myself, is my mistake, is it a mistake that I built or I'm residing in Villas?
Kapaa Free State is citing the feing.
Oh, actually, where is Free State?
Department of Agriculture itusa balisakuru le feina Free State.
Eh, actually, the Department of Agriculture, which, which side of of Free State are they paying attention to?
You can mention hori, hobilele incident ya Estina, hau na di homu tse fitleng Estina.
There's an incident eh that happened in Estina, there were cows that were brought in Estina.
You check dwelling, hau na di puri sa kilenza fuwa batu dwelling oba tus.
In dwelling, people were given goats in the form of assistance.
Now, how shareba oyakornelia, hau na di homu, zela tama China za ilenza fitla, wontateba cornelia oba tus.
When you look at Cornelia, there were cows from China that were assisting people there.
Now, poza reboza ke hori, muso waro na Free State, obatla hori assista, orokwano itza di job creation, sisi kara Free State kapaa, obatla batuwaruamba feeta na.
So, the question is, is the government of Free State really willing to assist us or it it just want to assist people who are just passing by?
How tla kara Villas eh, everything ernali nyona, from trekereke rekinwa, whatever. Hau na mo muso ukilwa tawari, kebatla uli tusaka one, two, three. In fact, Villas eh, hayo, planning ya, ya Department of Agriculture kapaa, muso waro na o assista.
In short, in Villas, we are not getting any assistance. Eh, I bought my own tractor, but there are no, there are no tools coming from our government.
Why I'm saying that, ke poza poza oru, how hona hori, otuse kara dwelling, ndiskeza sebeza, o feeta Villas, uyeka kara Cornelia, ndiseza sebeza, o feeta uyeh Freer, ndisezo sebeza, otane Villas otoru assista, two. Hobani omka fire.
Sorry, intateka, otoloka suha, ketsebele dro potze na kau latela. So, how bamtelela kutho.
Sorry.
Please, go back, they have.
Poza kore, how tla dwelling o assista, kadi puri sena ta diskasi.
The issue is, when you come to dwelling and give them goats and that project becomes unsuccessful.
You go to Freer Estina, you help them, that project also not successful.
O feeta uyeh.
Freer Estina.
Uyeh Freer Estina, ebey projecti ha sebeze limo.
You pass Villas again, you go to Cornelia, the same problem.
O feeta Villas eh, uyeh Cornelia, butatabo wunsebulite.
And when you check in Cornelia, ochecka on the farm star Cornelia, hau na lebatu wazo ankaha ra Bloomfontaine, baba batoa Velcom.
In Cornelia, farms are from Bloomfontaine, some are from Velcom, but the problem is still the same.
No, they've got farms in Cornelia.
Okay, bua, ke ketsebea otola, ita ketsebele dro potze na.
How shareba, hau na lebatu, batu ankaha ra Velcom.
There are people from Velcom.
Batu akaha ra Bloomfontaine.
They are from Bloomfontaine.
Ba ona plasi kara Cornelia.
They own a farm in Cornelia.
Kidula next to the road.
I'm staying next to the road.
Everyone can see di puri sa kadi inguza kadi homuza.
Everyone can see my cows, my cattle, but I don't get the land.
How ya manu who who onta dema nila fapela L D kapalanto, ole kupa tus.
When you go to the officials to ask for assistance, that is the L D.
A white farmer, he's owning the whole Villas farms.
Mo, mo raplasi, alimun, kimunga mo buka feela o Villas.
Di plasi, tama Spala, te onanke Maspala, uri lisitze.
Farms that are owned by municipality have been listed out.
Dilisueki enama, dilisi hau ya Maspala, bao bulela oru dilisi kau feela, determinatu, hau na ma ngana linlis.
But when you go to the municipality to inquire about the land, you are told that there's no list, or there's no land that has been listed out.
Mara one man uri ona kau feela.
But empa motwale munki enamun atzo na kau feela.
Hutwele mo to Frankfurt, ato o akema kara Villas, abale ma kara Villas.
Somebody from Frankfurt got into Villas and planted in Villas.
Har ya Maspala owa bulela hori boona, le shulilo ntusaka one, two, three, kenal trekereza.
When you go to the municipality to tell them, look, you couldn't assist me, but I've got my own tractors in order to use them for farming.
Ke taiti me.
I'm going to plow my, plant myself.
In fact, lisia piece of land, joale kau file yo.
Give me a lease contract of a piece of land, like you did to the other person.
Di kese diya tima, hau na lis.
Then I'm being told that there's no lease.
We are chela, we are reporter, chelle, zabaofi fitbaliwa.
You, you, your staff get bent down, but there's still no assistance.
And other thing eh taha lang, every morning eh eh Department of Agriculture eh itzang, hau na some of individuals, ba otlaba fumana, baba parlamenti, itzodi sakata di pori, itzadi in kaharazon. Mara, some of us, rasa tsebele oru di fitla joan tozzi.
Oh, babo.
How, 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 how shareba, the same Department of Agriculture mani sosol, bale.
When you look at the Department of Agriculture in Sausal.
Otatwala batu baba parlamenti sakata di pori.
You'll find people having eh milli bags or dry millies.
Kana kue, uguakamutana lunkomse three or four.
It's somebody who's got three or four cows.
How zebor, ditlile zwa hunuri suenin, hui sa itzi.
You don't know where the, the, when did the registration process take place.
Nthwe muha perbatan uko palu fapa, ki hori, harbatu baborati mo, ba putana, ba feela mo, renali problem eh.
We, we also don't want to be like subsistence farmer, subsistence farmers, but we want to grow.
Renali problem eh holo ya ya musebiti kara na hayarona Free State.
There's a problem of high unemployment in Free State.
And the same government gazet, eh repatalaba twenty-one, twenty-three, and something.
The government gazet is stipulating the amount to be paid to the workers.
Same government, hayo konor assista hori, orokwano ba develop, orokwano hira batuwa muhai.
The same government is not assisting to develop us so that we can employ the South Africans. That's why.
Rese taka twalusu.
We're working with the people from Lesotho.
How checka Eastern Cape?
When you look at Eastern Cape.
Bo kebecha.
Kebecha.
Ba fuari trekere monu, zeboma five, six.
People have been given five to six tractors there.
Ba fuari homu monu, or ba beba empowered.
They are being empowered by being given some cattle.
Joale, poza ke poza ngo parlamenti aruna Free State, ki hori.
So, the problem that I'm posing to our Free State government.
Refitla la joan oru, runa rifumaner tusor, orokwano tusaba na.
How do we get to a point where we will be assisted by the government so that we can assist our fellow South Africans?
Issue yangya molo.
In regarding the issue of fire.
Molo, otodula ocha, retotiima, because molo ochiswa kiri nyaope, zetletze mo, zesnamusebiti.
There'll always be felled fires because there's unemployed people who are drug addicts.
How ka checka di stats, zaba tuwa kenan udi drugs every day.
If you look at the statistics of people using drugs today.
Every day, about thirty to forty percent, ya wontateba malapaba tsuka di nyaope.
That percentage of men, according to him, are smoking, or are using, are smoking nyaope.
Because, hau na musebiti.
Because there's high unemployment rate.
Renali, diskill si, riwatahu eza musebiti, urba tuwaro na, babeli musebiti ve di joka.
We are skilled in wanting to create job opportunities, but we are not getting assistance.
Komre, nakia ipo, ah, nakia ipoza hori, hobani miyako yemi har koko ta, resa budele ihan.
I always ask myself, why, when we knock at other doors, we are not being welcome?
Eh, ngatshaba holo haparlamente ekafitsheza eh ditletlebozena zaru na komre tsi si hori.
I would appreciate if, if parliament can forward our complaints to Messisi.
Sora premier akari nkeala shoong, abona hori, rebata neti hui eza ekonomiya runa ya Free State.
So that the, the premier can take, take our matters seriously because we want to assist the province of Free State.
Enwi issue ya runa ernali problem kaya ona, kiri employee, zeka harika mo kama Spali.
We also have a problem with the, the employees inside the.
Kara Maspar.
In the municipality.
Because batuwa deploy timo onu assista, maraso ya mosali deploy taronda kastulo. Ufi la, joale tanzote di appointment, zemilyo, marakatsele kamo, eno safara kadi pofo.
Because the employed people, when we need assistance, they feel that we, we need to make several appointments and they, and?
And hard to say.
But we don't get assistance.
Enwi haper kopa lefa, tse kara Villas, rekopa hori.
We also need land in Villas.
Renali, ploto te more than fourteen.
We've got more than fourteen plots.
Te onanke Joni fe.
Owned only by Joni.
Washel.
From Shell.
Repoza hori, the same rate eh patalamo, har ka kenyo molo runa kahono patala, the same rate.
We are asking ourselves, if the same rate is paying, are we going to pay the same rate as him?
One ser kahono, ba joale, rtkonohu eza, creationa musebiti, enar createa musebiti, reta kahono patala di services, Maspala no putama.
If we can pay the same rates, we'll be able to work and we'll be able to pay the rates so that the municipality doesn't collapse.
Eki talosa hori, har ka hono fumana, piece of land, rakhono createa musebiti.
I'm saying, if we can get a piece of land and create jobs.
Reta kahona hori, refaba tu musebiti, baba taladi services.
We'll give people jobs so that they can pay the rates so that the municipality can.
Atsota sad, administration center can out.
Be out of that process of administration. Then we need to have places to make, to create jobs. Thank you.
Agile du medise boshe.
Greetings to all.
Eh, kine, kikupa fela hane parlamente ekaratu seza. Se ba kene sabato, bana lidiraite za, uki sabato ba bamushoku, empa abona, basa.
My, my, my request is for parliament to assist me with the issue of people who've got the right to hurt others.
Hu kisha batwa bamushoku, empa abona, basa tuhalela uki sabshoku.
Whilst them are not supposed to be hurt.
Kahara na hayarona.
Libizo.
Ki, oh, libizo, kimutlalipulian kavinde, keso Mafube.
My name is Motlalipulian Kavinde, I'm from Mafube.
Jale, butata bo ona, hakinsa kima meti mo, renali, butata bo tsvanani dro poka ofena.
As I'm listening to the, to most of the speakers, we've got the same problems in different towns.
Ha holo, yoan hara tala sakurin la ba hori.
As it, when it comes to the issues of the farmers.
Hobido ngomfato, komelelo, likelilo niya kahori, motroya motsoha, ba tuho ba na motroye mungamotsoha, zela pidi kapahuwa.
This gives me eh the idea that black people don't want to assist each other or to see one, some getting rich.
And eh, hone keu ko pa ha holo, ke hori, hanareka fumansa tu so, kaba na bana baya niya opa.
We need, our request is to get assistance with the, our children who are using niya opa.
Ba zamamba sinhetza ba tu di nto, zabo na, la bale kahuyeza in.
Destroying other people's assets in different endeavors that other people are trying to.
Honale, re kene na konya Maria, di tulod, di chalitza, di lita zika.
Now we are in the winter season and there's fire all over, day in, day out.
Empa habatswa.
But those people don't get arrested.
Oka motwala, senze uji de, ota tswa kaga yenu, usanu se motsoile, hobano tu sebezi xa niya opa, ha zebokwana.
Whether they destroy other people's stuff, they can be arrested. Today, tomorrow, they are being released because it said they are being, um, they are using niya opa, therefore they cannot be arrested.
Kine kikupa fela hapa, hapa la mente, ekar shebe la ba tuatsvanale ba, leba tu, teba tu sheka di lo, zabo na.
Please parliament intervene with people's complaints. Thank you. Renali bu, intaten kavinde. Thank you, intaten kavinde. The next speaker. Siwise la telan. Eh, agile bu eh, kidu medise, chavase monale ba etapelawa, runa kaofena. Thank you, I greet all the people gathered here and our leadership.
Ke eme monakisla Ramuluti.
As I'm standing here, I'm from Ramuluti.
Ferdun Skron. Mo lefati, leo re dula ngela la zati, le zati.
In that area, we are complaining daily.
Eh, re peleki zela pili ki talose.
Before I go, before I continue, let me explain this.
Marta Tlahdi.
My name is Marta Tlahdi.
Kiboshoku ha holo, hakitsevogana, anka rin, hakitobua, ka bo pilo, ba ka situation ya Ramuluti.
I'm very much hurt, I don't even know where to start when I talk about the situation in Ramuluti.
Re loka miti.
We are in need of water.
Le keke la bulenla, hona meti, atokuwalwa, kapaha atokuwalwa.
You, you, you can't be told or informed on time whether the water will be stopped or not.
Kalu shoding, ya motlakasi. Hananere ba ta kiti, wa, runa ba sinan eh, maranra, nguri, rema meli di radionza, runa, ori.
At least about load shedding, even if we don't have communication gadgets, we can maybe hear from the radio that there's going to be a load shedding.
Ke lebu eh, parlamente ya roona.
I would like to thank our parliament.
Hai atamezi haufilo roona.
For coming closer to us.
Horere ta hono, sama ikutuwa roona.
So that we can table our views.
Ke meadula ngale mo.
I'm a woman staying alone.
Hakina ndate.
I don't have a husband.
Hakina ngwana.
I don't have a child.
Haona taba, kamukum di ma nde.
It doesn't matter, that's the will of God.
Kenale mozi.
But I have a shelter.
Hakina musebezi.
I'm unemployed.
Eh, jukupa ngo ka iboza.
What I want to ask is.
Ho ba etapelawa ro.
To our leadership.
Anaa, ba ka hona, rutusa na.
Can they help us?
Runa basa sebezi in.
Us the unemployed.
Ba sinan lekeno.
Who don't have any form of income.
Ka di rapana, niya na riki, te te di rapana, kama zareti.
By just giving us small land or to make gardens so that we can eat vegetables.
Tala ere patetza ba tu.
We are very hungry.
Haya ba talani pofolo fela kapakalamo.
We don't only see hunger on animals, only because of fire. Even the fire is affecting us.
Re rata meroh.
We like vegetables, we are Basotho.
Joale, enka ibuan ha beke na.
Here's another point.
Escom.
Escom.
Haki bua ka escomo, ya tine.
I get annoyed when I talk about Escom.
Mada. Kaharu Escom, o ba sebezi ba Escom.
Inside Escom, among the employees of Escom. In twenty sixteen.
Kilaka tiwelo motlakasi, kaleba.
Electricity was cut off in my, at my place.
La motu akahari.
Because of the person who's working inside Escom.
Ah, opile motlakaswaaka.
Having tempered with my electricity.
Kanako, hakina next.
At that stage, I had nothing.
Six thousand, ne yo, ene ba ebaytla.
That six thousand, they were demanding, I don't have it.
Ka tswanela hori, kilonsa six thousand, ni kabakalaba, hey, supo, ki ba ka bankumela, hananehanani.
I didn't have that amount, but my brothers managed to assist me.
Ntade, no ha fo unelo, or ki mo fo unela, ah, te, outlo share ba poso, sa itzadi ente motlakaswaaka.
When I called this gentleman to come and see the mistakes he made.
Lunching, til na ngoku.
Every time he goes to lunch, up to this day.
Mada, joko balo, unuma be ten saba, kabakalamonda o.
I sleep on an uncomfortable bed because of it.
Oka so honu, untu sa, mona o. Ah, hutishe chelete, eno ba kilapi le, no.
Can this man bring back my money because I'm hungry now?
Oba opue ke na.
Because that's him who made it.
Tapoyo, ki tleliwa na kamoli, lisii yo ya six thousand, ki tleliwa na, no. Oh, ba tu ba na, ba tu ba huteyi, ba ke ni kaharu musebezi, opa talan, runa re la pile, ba je sakaba, kama ro.
Because these people who are working, who are educated.
Six thousand yo.
I've been robbed that six thousand.
Tsuanzi be, ijuwe, kene be, reki lebe, temano.
I should have used that six thousand to be, to buy a comfortable bed.
Kabakalamoni.
Because of this man.
Hakiba timono.
I don't like this man.
Jeko pa tu so.
Please, I need help.
Oh, enale, ka hona, untu sa, o mono o.
Can you assist me so that this man?
Laxa zebefani ayi di ma.
I know his name, even if I don't know his surname.
Chelete ki, ebato ba, ke na ropili motlakas, ke le mozaidi, ke sa huteyi, ke sa zebeniks.
I want my money back because that's him who tempered with the electrical wires.
Ma, di unis, ma di unis di akene, ba escomo haba fi la, motlakaswa opue, ha joan.
I want to know the cost of this, this, what's causing my bill to be so high?
Kilaka ya Botaville Head Office, escomo kadile.
I went to Botaville Head Office of Escom.
Killa, ki fumana bo ba.
I was crying, I didn't even shower on that day.
Haban chakala laptop onyo ya boena.
When they check on the laptop.
Di manu kense, draata, ona kense draata, na kense draata da.
The, the.
Ki kense draata.
The outcome of the investigation. The outcome of the investigation was that there was a wire that was connected there.
Yes, haki motzaba tuha ba Escom, ki wuzi joan namo halbe la ro, to leta draata.
When I asked the Escom employees, how did I, ba, how, how did I put that box, that wire in the box?
Anyway.
They said, "These things are available anyway." Then I said, "You are taking me for granted."
Joale. Na diropezo motlakas, ba tu, ya, ikutuza me soke yo.
My.
Ha holo, twenty sixteen, til no.
My electricity has been tempered with.
Obefena, haoba no tolok. Joale. Eh, ya mada. Kikopa omu ngaza bu, anka pelwa na ko ili, na ko.
I want an interpreter that will be faster because time is running, it's getting late.
Joale, mada, I'm so sorry, ena kitonga na ko itelele, ibili mo hoga jibu ya o. Ibi la jikuati ya o.
Ausmata.
Le kanu bulenlaslo, interpreter tova, tu, sunsa interpreter, deka skua.
Yes. Me bua, butle butle, shea oban tolokoe, lukela, re tolokoe ka skua.
Iswa kasa, ha uswa yes.
It's, it's her job, she's used to it.
Yes. Joale, ngare, hotla, kama ni kama Mulut, kikopa tu so.
From Ramuluti, please, I, I'm asking for help.
Le mukena ntsu ba hans.
Even Mukena knows me very well.
Re la pile ka mol.
We are hungry on that side.
Ki sa koi, ki sa se rapana, kajarete.
I need to make my own garden. Who's Mukena?
Ki Mukena, ki zevi zola, re, mtsuwa ka Mukena, le mu kancelar.
It's a, one of the.
Ha uta ke na, ye no areng, eh di, taba ta, ke kense, ko, joan, ka sheku. Kamakahaya duti kwa na, ike tla sabile fo. Joale. Jeko pa tu so. Ke ye na ya Mukena, yo ntsu ba hans. Mukazana, Nuduzi, kama ka boena, eh, daman. Mukazana, ye no tinga atla tu di, kabakalama.
Mukazana was not here today.
Ma ka, ha, ha.
He's la, he's a liar.
Ramuluti.
Ramuluti.
Kidi twen.
We are like monkeys.
Ba tu ba.
These people.
Ausmata.
Mada.
Mukazana ke mu kancelar alen. Ki me ya, haibide, oka odin.
Mukazana is above, is a mayor.
Ha wa na obewe, ke ma, ha, se.
Is a boss, we don't even know, we later team. We voted, we didn't vote for Mukazana to be there. We didn't vote for him.
Joale, kikopa tu so yo, na, I'm hungry.
I need help, kilapi le.
Kilapi le, liya bole twenty five fifty four.
I am twenty five fifty four.
Linki sete di pe, uki riva.
Please give me seeds.
Zeli di zivamu, diya sebeza kadi.
Any other thing that can be used for gardening. I also love flowers.
Obe onte.
So that the place can be beautiful. There's no fire, I clean too much.
Hakina next, linka tonawa Escom majen six thousand, akaita meki lukiste, jarata kala.
Even, even this man who ate my money, six thousand from Escom, you need to give me answers to that.
Ki ba tu ba.
I'm very angry.
Ona ba tu. Ona ba tu. Reshule, Fidjun Skron, Ramuluti.
Fidjun Skron, there are no.
Ona ba tu, maspa la wa pela.
The municipalities are alive.
Na koya so, kanga dula stulo se.
Before he could sit on this.
Ha kato su, dula osa ba so.
Once he's on this seat, on the head, going around with it.
Hanata balilo, ona di tu.
He doesn't care about you, ghosts.
Ofe takakolo ya, ha, eh, fo famo.
He comes with his big car.
Wa ba. And eh, utena aba mo karona.
He's on that seat because of us.
Ha no to dula mo, no no.
He cannot come and sit here if there couldn't be any people here, never.
Leha le. Wa ta balo nixelag di pie, ba itse ba lebo la kipoko, ho, ontuale kilrantaya, ne ba yenze mo, ba yenze kasanta.
Even the keeper knows that what they did there is nothing, they made it with some.
Lisik nature ya hori. Ausmata. La usapota mla o. Eh, lisik nature. One minute. Yes, ma. La fetaka one minute now. If le niya go, la hono wa lamus.
Can you write?
Le kanu wa la ka sesutu la rumene.
Can you write in sesutu and submit your submission?
Fetan, one minute. All right. Joale, kilapi la, hulino, kilapi la, so, zako.
I'm very hungry, even now, I'm very hungry.
Litoga, litoga, you're going to eat. Yeah, yeah, I am hungry, Thomas, yes. Joale.
Therefore.
Ki ba ta hori, li, dule, li bua le Mukazana.
I want you to always, or contact Mukazana.
Mukazana must take care of us, must not take the leadership seat and put it on the head. Pe la parama koloya ba belo amets.
Before getting into his car, there must be a red carpet so that he can walk on it, so that he, he, he doesn't get with any dirt into his own.
Ke bo ba na lebo.
That cleanliness he's having.
Le runa ramsho.
We also need that.
Ye na.
Like him.
Thanks.
Thank you. Chileka. Get the details of this guy, where is Escom, ne, we need to follow it up, ne. This guy of Escom, please.
What the chief, all right. Agile bu, si bakale motzotzoku, fumana, na konya na, joale.
Thank you for the opportunities afforded to me.
Kil, kilu medise, ke tapeli, eti inkuano.
Greetings to the leadership present here.
Kilu welis chavase, eti inkua.
And the community at large.
Kalivitso, kilu passeka, sitole, fale, fati, eh, droponya, Stensres, Madwantwang.
My name is Paseka Sitole from Stensres in Madwantwang.
Maspalingwa Mutaka.
In Mutaka municipality.
Kense, ke zamamohole, intetebani, ba kirtlani, wa na Stensres.
I'm, I'm together with those gentlemen who are from Stensres.
Right, kilu bu eh.
Thanks.
Na wana, na antabi, niya na ya mollo.
On the issue of failed fires.
Mollo, kibota ta bo mo holo, lefaseka bo par.
It's eh eh, a general problem eh throughout the world.
Utisabashoku, ha, ya di droponzena te nyana.
You get sad, especially in small places.
Hobana, habana di sebezi, ba kenau ka uti.
Because they don't have equipment to, to extinguish it.
Neketloko ko pa musuwa ro na, we mo ba na ba di droponze te nyana, hoko.
I request, I request our government that for these small towns, they should do something.
Because, renali di pofol.
Because we have animals.
Eh, ya bo be edin.
Secondly.
Ki ye na, eh, ntu, ya di pofol, zina zebay, renali tu na zina.
It's about our animals.
Di pofol, zina renali tu na zina, yoleka, agaleba tuakala, baba nyana ba suka banale, buchuni kapama, ta au, katkala, hobana di.
Because we are up and coming farmers who don't have the, the, the opportunity.
Di nyana ha holo.
Those animals are a few in numbers.
Hadibi, le hadimo ra.
They don't even grow.
Marariya rata, okai, okai, zha, okadi, uarebi, nadesona, ba renali le ratohozo.
But we like to own them because we la, we really love animals.
Ne, kikopa oza na, muso haona, seka tu seza, hoswa, na kaso, na mona, muftiwa.
So I would like to, to find out if government can assist us in any way.
Ki di fariki.
I, what I'm, the kind of animals that I'm having are pigs.
Hobana honale bo, meban zere sebeza, lebo, ona, ki neteli me, eh, rineli Metato.
There are two ladies that I'm working with, Me, Elin and Metato.
Kala ga ra buabu, ta ta bo na na lebo.
I, I discussed the problem with them.
Ba ba ta, raoko pa, ta ta ba refa feedback, leka mona, ne kira tiro, yoleka, ki fui, niya tala, ne ki ki reise, ka mona ki shaisi.
They said they would give us feedback, that is why I thought I should also put my, my, my concerns forward.
Eh, drope ya ro na, yoleka, le drope nyana ha holo, wonetimba tu.
Since our town is very small.
Ha ye pele, leo, ona, ki wea di dropetze, me, kailonwe.
It's stagnant.
Bo holo ba, ntsu zene di ento, yana, liya za, kuwa, za, kiswa mona Krustatamo.
Most of the things that we had were, were, were brought here in Krustat.
Har ka ba rechotso falataba yi.
That didn't sit well with us. Because now, if we need anything, we have to travel to Kronstadt. Even when you don't have any money, you have to make some means to get to Kronstadt. I would therefore appeal for our government that some of the things be taken back to the small towns. There is no way that everything should be in Kronstadt. Then, the site, my next issue is about the site. The site, yes. Most of the services in Stensres. The list is being halved and then brought here to Kronstadt. And then people in Stensres do not have a site, all of them. When I did the dumping site. We also have dumping sites. Dumping site is, call it, what's it say? When I get it, I'll tell you. In another year, in one meeting with Nda Tey Ismahashule. We showed him those dumping sites. They have since been there. We requested him to transform those dumping sites to the sites because there are many people with outside. Even now, nothing is happening. Please, our leadership, can you look at that as well? We have EPWP people and it's true, they are working, they are doing their job. But the township is still dirty. Please also look into that as well. Thank you, Kialebu. Thank you so much.
Ralibu, Ntateshale.
Thank you, Ntateshale.
The next speaker, ma.
Kirumeti Sa. Kirumeti Sa, put your hand.
Greetings to the leadership. I'm from Ramuluti. We are here about this, the problems that we are having. So that our leaders can hear what our problems are. Those old houses that were built in Ramuluti. And the toilets, they are falling apart, they are leaking. And the roads are also in a dilapidated manner. In our yard, water is, there's water that is not flowing well. I apologize for having not mentioned my name. I am Agnes Hasule. From Ramuluti. I don't have much to say. Yeah, I only heard an issue about leaking houses and toilets. Thank you. Thank you, ma.
Kamau, is there anyone who wants to speak or let me come? That side? Are you covered? Okay. Sure.
Greetings, leadership. My name is Musia Mercedes from Madwantwang in Stensres. I support the bill wholeheartedly. Hoping that it will work for us. Let me start with me first. The municipality where I reside. Does not take care of the citizen. I stay in my neighbor's village. Even now, you will find the situation as it is. There is still sewage running everywhere. There is no way, there's no time where the municipality will come and check my complaints. I even hate to go to the municipal offices. Because you go there happy and come back disappointed. Let me pass that point. Let me make aware my leadership and all that are here. Everyone who's wearing something in here. The power of those clothes that you are wearing is from the grass. Once the grass gets bent. We won't have anything to wear. Meaning that we'll all be naked? Because it's because of the animal's skins and the wool that we have clothes. Let me pass that one. There's a new settlement in Madwantwang. There are no toilets, there's no water in that settlement. Now we are using the old bucket system. The stench that is coming out of that settlement. It's really disheartening. Please, can this bill be useful to us? The next issue? Oh, I have animals in the municipal land? But I cannot extend my animals because the land is too little? Whether I like it or not, I have to reduce my animals? What should I do in order to get a larger land except the municipal land? Once you go to the municipality requesting another land. You come across criminals in that office. They will tell you that you must pour them petrol so that they can go to Sarsolbeck? Only to find that they are still around. They haven't gone to Sarsolbeck. We've made many proposals. They are still there in the municipality offices in Kronstadt. What should I do in order for me to own some land? Because I want to create employment. So that I can give the unemployed some work. I don't need job. I want to create job. Thank you so much, my leader. Please listen to everything that has been said here. Thank you.
We are indeed listening to you, that's why we're here.
Greetings to the leadership. And I appreciate your presence. I'm Lea Rantaille as the name. I'm from Dumahule, Paris. Let me start with the parliament. That has hosted us today. I don't know where to start. I think you as leaders, you know how important breakfast is to everyone, even to schoolchildren. The white lady has explained that most of people who are working with fire are volunteers. Who don't have any income, what they receive is just an appreciation letter. You are being told that you'll get transport somewhere else. We left our houses at seven o'clock. Some of us are suffering from sugar diabetes. This is the second function that I've attended. Previously, we were at Frankfurt. When we entered in the door, there was a fruit and water that was offered to us. I think even you leadership, you are having some snacks right now. So for us, since seven. Since seven o'clock in the morning, having eaten nothing with a stipend of 400 rand, really is not good. Can that please be taken care of? Next time, we will not even bother to come to this event. That is why we are not even here, all of us, we are still angry. I support the bill. I suggest that there should be a policy of people whose assets are bent down. Because most of them are poor people who live in shacks. The policy will even compel firefighters to come quickly when the incidents are being reported. Because I don't think, it's not all the places that don't have firefighters, in Paris, we do have. But sometimes when they come, they say they don't have a pump. Everywhere they go to, everything has been bent down already. There's nothing they do all the time when they come to a scene. Recently, an old man has died due to fire in his shack. We have a common age in Dumahule for since two years now. But the municipality doesn't want people to stay at that common age. Please, we want. We want your assistance, we are being threatened that the residents will come and evict us there. We also need assistance about fencing the common age and other funds. I think for the next public hearing, maybe the department of agriculture should be present because most of the concerns that were raised concern the department of agriculture. Thank you.
Ralibu, Aus. We have heard you. Say, you said you forgot something. I'm gonna give you two minutes. If you cannot observe that, within two minutes, you can do a routine some machine.
Thank you, Che. When I prepared my speech, I did not hear what my fellow farmers here say. When you have one cow or one sheep, you are a farmer. I'm also a farmer. I can hear that the farmers don't have equipment there on the common age. And I want to propose a solution for that today. There is newer ways of fighting a fire. We've got blowers that you put on your back and then you blow the fire with wind, very fast wind. So. Hotfeld has got the best price for a blower in South Africa. So my suggestion is that the farmers, the small farmers, one blower is costing 8,500. So if there's a few farmers, a few cattle farmers, they can buy that together or actually I want the parliament to buy or the government to buy that firefighter for ten small farmers and then they can. We must change our way of thinking, we must not wait for the municipality to fight our fires. When you are a farmer, you must be a firefighter. And there, I want to extend my help to my fellow farmers. If they buy, if they can buy the equipment. I will train them for free. Thank you, Che.
Thank you so much for your inputs. And then, they were very constructive. And then we learn every day. I think in the next public hearing, we'll have to invite all the relevant sector departments. That proposal by Auselci from Paris. They are all the same, because we've then started, we have a rent lunch for you, but we realize now it's 13:39. And some of you definitely traveled from very far away in the morning. The beauty about it, our managers are here, they will look at that proposal to see how do then maybe put food parcel earlier. We planned that we're gonna finish here by two. And then, understanding that we're starting at after ten, everybody will have catch up something at home before they leave. The intention was not to stop you, want to apologize. But the way I understood, Auselci is the stipend that she gets. But the way I understood AOC is the stipend that she gets of four hundred rand. That she can even buy breakfast. That's a policy matter that we need to further engage with the department. But then there are issues that, eh, service delivery related, we're gonna write a covering memo to the premier as per your request. And then we expect the matter to get the attention of the province. It's a matter we can follow up on your behalf because we are public representatives. Then I'll put the acting mayor on the spot now to talk to the issues that we raised that are service delivery related. But there are the municipalities that are not here, Mafube, there's a lot of issues that have been raised on Mafube local. And the other one is Muate. I heard something from Muate municipality. Is the matter that we are going to write the covering memo to the respective mayors to respond for those issues. I believe all the speakers that were speaking here, you've put in your names and contact details. So the, our committee secretary will be able to give you feedback on the matters that will have followed up. Having said that, let me hand over to the acting mayor, M.M.C. Nsalah, to deal with some of the issues. I wonder how we're going to deal with your own mayor carrying the chair. I don't know how we're gonna deal with it.
Uh, thank, thank you, Chair. For the opportunity. I, I'm going to try and, eh, respond to most of the things that were raised in this house. But I must say that I'm, I'm quite impressed by the fact that, eh, the community members who raised issues also proposed the solutions. And it makes my job easier because I just have to implement what they are proposing. Eh, the most common issue is the issue of the communes. Eh, maybe combining it with, eh, Chair, the issue of availability of land. Eh, this has been a problem for the municipality in terms of managing the communes. Because you find that, eh, it is not controllable and it is not properly controlled. There are laws and legislations that we need to adhere to most of the time. And I think we'll be glad if you can have people that are willing to, to serve in these committees so that they can help the municipality manage better the communes. Ntate, they do one, uh, rampore from Stensres. I, I, I note your issue and I think it was also raised by, eh, Ntate Mariti. Eh, that there's a very serious lack of firefighters. And it is true. Eh, the fire engine that we're having is in constant, it's only one fire engine. That is expected to save three towns. That are in the, in the radius of about sixty kilometers each. Eh, this truly will explain that it is a very serious, eh, eh, baggage on, on, on our firefighters. Eh, we do have a fully, eh, eh, competent staff. But this thing, eh, 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 honorable Chair, is, is a problem because the disaster used to belong to the district municipality. Only two years ago, that, eh, during Covid, that we established a, a sort of a fully fledged disaster management structure. So this also may not be an excuse, but it tells you that we, we are still trying to get where we want to be. There's a small, eh, eh, van that is used to for firefighting. That is going to be deployed in Fijonskron. We are starting with Fijonskron because Fijonskron is the second biggest. But the aim is to have another one that will go to Stensres. But we cannot only deploy, eh, those things there without training people. Eh, May Lisa Fenter has extended a, a hand through Mokaka Fire Protection Association that they are able to have. And I wish maybe after this deliberation, but also it will be easy because, eh, as you say, councillor Spaski is part of you. So it will be easy to facilitate it, to facilitate it with him so that we can see how together we can be able to train people so that when we deploy that equipment there, people are able to... Eh, I think also we need to maybe find a mechanism of funding, eh, such initiatives. And also make sure that this, eh, kind of trainings are also accredited. Eh, the issue of land is important and I noted. Eh, and I noted. Eh, May Monica Ranue from Fijonskron. Eh, you raised an issue of fleet, eh, that only comes when, when there's a funeral of leadership or when there's leadership events. Eh, Chair, there's a very serious problem with, with our fleet in the, in our municipality currently. Eh, yellow fleet that we, 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 we intended to purchase, we had a very serious legal problems with it. It is a huge fleet of about, of over hundred million that was supposed to be purchased. And, uh, this shows that there's a very serious need of fleet in our municipality. We are anticipating for the case to end sometime in July so that we can continue with acquiring such yellow fleet. So that the, the residents of Ramolutzi, Constat and Stensres can be able to be assisted. Eh, there's issue of water cutoffs. Eh, the issue of water cutoffs, especially in our, our municipality here, in, most of the time, is emergency situations. Where we have a, where we'll have a pipe burst. And by the time we try to communicate already, the water is off. Maybe there are exceptional situations, like when we had, eh, the floods. Eh, where we had our pumps at the pump station maybe subsiding underwater. And we are glad that this exce-, eh, exceptionally happened in Fijonskron. Eh, in a few weeks, in a few weeks, eh, I think in the past few weeks, we managed to, eh, now solve that problem. Eh, we have secured a, a, a floating pump.
Which will be, which will be, oh, uh, we will be...
Floating.
Floating, uh, on top of the water.
So that it does not, most of the time when we have heavy rains, it goes down under the water. So that it can help, eh, with that problem. Eh, some of the issues, eh, are the issues of other municipalities and I also have noted them. I'll speak to my colleagues in those areas. Eh, Mayla Di Martha. Eh, twenty-five fifty-four Ramolutzi, I, I even took your address, Mama, because... Eh, I heard your issues.
You asked for a seat.
And the issue of Escom also need to be followed up and the guy who ripped you off. I'm going to request your ward councillor to attend to your issues.
What I won't be able to resolve is the issue of the... I, I will not get into that part, please. But once I meet the mayor. I will tell him that. Please, he should take off that seat. I, I want to thank you, the, the residents of Mukaka. I've noted the issue of Siwaspilish. Please, can you please come to my office tomorrow so that the, the matter can be addressed? Even now, after, after this meeting, you can just approach me so that we can see what we can do about your issue. The dilapidated house?
Eh, we, we, we are currently busy with the database of dilapidated houses. Eh, because the premier has committed to rebuild those houses. I, I'm not sure if this information has filtered down to Fijonskron. But I'll speak to the relevant councillors around that issue. So that they make sure that we are being assisted.
Thank you, Chair Heston.
There was one interesting point, eh, acting mayor, raised by the Secretary of the Fire Protection, eh, May Elise Fenter. She emphasized the role of ward councillors. And I found it very profound. I wish if we can calculate such culture to all our councillors. Uh, this world would be a better place to live in. We have ca-, we are almost getting close to the end of our program. I want to just hand over to my colleague. Honorable Mudise. Then he's gonna render the closing remarks in the way forward.
Chair Heston, thank you very much. Dumelambahait.
Greetings to you all, my people.
I'm sure you all wanted to hear my voice. Yeah, eh, eh, here it is. Uh, greetings to honorable members and yourself, eh, acting mayor. I want to take this opportunity on behalf of the committee. To express our greatest gratitude to the people of Mukaka municipality. Um, this is a continuation of a journey. Eh, we started in, in Zastron, eh, two days back. Yesterday, we were at Putadi Chava. This morning, when you wake up, we are here in Mukaka. Um, eh, in the next two weeks, we are going to the Northern Cape. We will be visiting all the provinces, eh, in the country. To consult on this bill. And this is not a tick box exercise. We, we take, eh, note of all the inputs that you have made. And some of the issues do not fall squarely within our, eh, scope of work. But because we are a body of parliament. We have a responsibility to then, eh, designate some of the issues to relevant portfolio committees. As, as the deliberations were going on seated here. We, we co-cast and agreed amongst ourselves that... Eh, going forward, forward, it's going to be important to invite all the stakeholders. So that if there's an issue of Escom, Escom must be here to respond. If there's an issue of transnet and roads and everybody else, they must be here to respond. If there's an issue of transnet and roads and everybody else, they must be here to respond. Because we don't want you to see us on TV and start pointing fingers. They came once and run away. Yeah, so we want to bring them here so that they can respond and commit to solve the issues that are affecting you on daily basis. We're happy that the acting mayor is here. We have, we have had him. He, he has committed. We will follow up with him too. Ntabeli has told you really.
And that issue of the, the seat or the chair, we have heard about it.
We'll also follow it up. And Chair Guru, what is the story of the chair on top of the head? But we want to assure you, the people of the Free State, that the issues that you have raised from Stensres and all these areas are noted. The battle on the amendment of the National Field and Forest Fire Amendment Bill continues. We're doing it not only for ourselves as a committee of parliament. We're doing it for the people of South Africa. After these consultations. There is another House of Parliament called the National Council of Provinces. NCOP, Leon, uh, we will take this bill to them. By process, katela zaboona. From there, it will be given to the president. To ascend and make it a law. And once it's a law. It is binding on all of us. And we are happy emerging from all the speakers here. All the speakers are giving the bills a thumbs up. So it means that we are going to take full responsibility once it becomes an act of parliament. With that being said, we are happy to be here.
You know, we love you, Mos. I'll give you the numbers of Honorable Paulson.
Yeah, he's readily available for any other engagement. Thank you very much, Chairperson.
We have come to the end of our session. You have been thanked by my colleague. Uh, there's food arranged outside. Uh, because return me like a mo. So it means those ones from this side will be the first one to go, pick up their food parcels, the middle row and the last row.
Because you started from this side, it means from that side you'll be the first to go up and get your pa, your food parcels.
We want to thank you from the bottom of our hearts for you taking time this Sunday. Thank you so much.
Greetings to you all, my people.